Next is invocation by United Church of Christ.
Next is invocation by United Church of Christ. Nobody? Alright, we'll go start with the roll call.
Gold Hammer.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
McCardle.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Up next, approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to chime in here. I'd like to not necessarily consent agenda, just the agenda as a whole. I'd like to visit about item number fourteen. It's the Corn Palace renovation project. As a member of that committee, being on that committee and then also a sort of a, I guess, you know, sort of, I guess, got sidetracked a little bit on how it was on the agenda and not knowing about that it was going to be placed on there as being one of the committee members. I did visit with Tim and Kevin about if they knew that it was coming forth on the agenda and Tim said he did mention an email that he had to you that you responded that you're going to place on there for council's action to take a look at it. I think a lot of us, a couple of things, I know it's the way it's worded, I'm a little concerned on that portion of it, on the renovation project of cost of up to twenty-three million to be financed and paid for by the city of Mitchell. I know we have our bid estimates back from our architects and we know where they're at, but we also, I think everybody does know that the fact there's a group working together for a private donor to be part of this project. And I don't want the misleading concept to take out the public about the fact that this renovation project is going to be twenty-three million dollars of city funds or taxpayer funds. That number will eventually get determined, however, at a much lesser amount or maybe no amount at all after that donor can get things worked out. So I just think this is, we're getting this a little bit too ahead of where we want to be for any kind of action to approve the fact of where that dollar amount is at and then let alone on the project itself until we get these other so-called players in place, I guess, and pieces of the puzzle come together. So with all that being said, I would like us to remove item number fourteen from the agenda tonight and we'll place it back on the agenda, obviously, when things are better in place as far as I'm sort of where my thoughts are at as being part of the community.
Do you guys have an estimate of what things will be? That was one of the reasons I put on here. Robin's estimate schedule was to have it on this agenda. That was what Robin asked for was to, for it to be on this, basically, the end of July to go forward. You know, some of my questions here are, what is the timeline? I was just working off Robin's timeline. You know, some of the other things are, how much are we willing to pay?
I don't think we're too far away. I do know there's a couple more meetings coming on this weekend or this week that's coming up that I think are going to be pretty crucial to this project and beneficial, obviously, to, to make, for the council to be presented to that in the taxpayers of this community to obviously understand where we're going to head on it and what kind of dollar amounts we're going to be looking at. So I just think we're a little bit too ahead of it and I appreciate you doing the timeline of Robin's, but I think at this time, I think it'd be best if we do move it and delete it and then we'll bring it back on the table when we can, so.
When will that be?
Hopefully sooner than later, so.
I was really hoping we were going to vote on it tonight, just pending the donor, sponsor, whoever it was, I guess, because I feel it's important to move the project forward if we're going to do it for budget reasons. And I really feel like the construction has, you've heard me say this before, it's kind of flattened out. And I think it would be beneficial if we are going to do the project to get the dollar amount secured and get the bids while the, what I would say, the construction in our favor would be in our favor to do it, I guess. And I was one that asked Jordan if we were going to, Mayor Hanson, if, when we were going to vote on it because Robin did put it on the screen when he gave us the presentation and this is the last meeting in July and he said vote in July. So I understand what you guys are saying, but I think time is really at the essence here if we're going to move forward, whether it's just maintenance items or if we're going to do the full-scale remodel.
Yeah, the other thing that really came into focus for me was we're doing budget and we have ten days, basically, for Corn Palace to submit their budget and other things can be changed later, but I really like to stay in on schedule, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you putting it on based on Robin's timeline, but at this part of it as being one of the committee members, it needs to be removed from the item night and obviously we'll work diligently with the other part of the puzzle so we can get it on the docket for the council to make a decision on how they want to move forward or not on the project and what, what a magnitude is it. So it just, right now it ain't quite ready yet, so.
Okay, Justin, you're going to have to walk me through the legal portion of how this works.
Yep, so at this point, you've got a motion and a second. You can call for any discussion and then we'd need a vote on it.
Is that included in this consent agenda items portion of it? So once we pass it, it's everything else in the consent agenda or is this a complete separation?
This would be before consent agenda.
Correct.
Yep, so this would be its own item.
Okay, anyone else want to say anything? I mean, I, I mean, I have a little list of all the stuff I was hoping to get some answers for tonight.
Yeah, I think one of the other considerations I would have is that since Robin's not here, there are definitely still questions that I have about the project that I think even in the committee conversations that we had, that when we talked about the price tag, it was contingent on finding a donor. And so waiting until that's successful or not, because I don't think anyone on that committee felt like this would be a number that the city would pay for straight out of taxpayer dollars. That it was contingent on finding a private donor to be successful with all of the different components that we put in. And if that's not the case, then I think that we, there are things that we certainly talked about that could be scaled back or taken out of the project to make it more financially feasible along those lines.
I guess one of the other questions I was hoping to get the answer to is if we don't get a donor, are we going to do the project and if we are, what's that number? You know, and what other, what other work are we going to do in the corn palace? You know, they did a bunch of maintenance on the back and it looks great, by the way, in the back of the corn palace and are we going to do that again this year? I'd hate to just do a bunch of extra work and then tear it all down, so. If you guys are okay with doing that, then.
I just think it's just, we're jumping the gun here. I think we need to, it's just premature.
What information do we need to get? You know, is there work I need to do to gather information so we can have the information to come forward? Just wait.
At this time, yes, we're going to ask for us to get the remaining of the donor figured out.
Okay.
I, I think it would be, we'd be hard pressed to say, oh yeah, let's move forward with this, that kind of a price tag. And without knowing if we got a donor, how much of one, I mean, I would not be in favor of spending anywhere near twenty-three million dollars. It's a lot even if you say it fast, so.
I personally wish we'd have left it, not done this because I know there's some people in the crowd that were hoping to discuss this and I was really hoping Robin would be here tonight to answer a lot of questions, whether they're yours, Mr. Gold Hammer, or mine, or the mayor's. And I understand he couldn't be here, so it is what it is, but I, I understand what you guys are saying about the donor. I'm with John. I've been very vocal that I will not be on board without a donor. It's just, I wouldn't stick that much money into a hundred-year-old building. It's not worth it to me.
All right, does anyone that wants to, in the audience that wants to talk about us waiting a long time to figure this out? Come on up. Or if we should remove it or not.
Yes, as long as he's coming up to talk about the removal of the agenda item, it is not about the renovation at all.
So can I?
So Mike, I guess my question would be, would you like us to remove the agenda item and wait till later? That sounds like.
I'd like you to vote it down, period. I think we've wasted multiple years on this. I've been hearing about this expansion for about twenty years. I've been hearing about this large donor for twenty years. If you come in tomorrow with twenty million in the bank, I don't care what you do with it. I don't think this is very good use of funds, but I, I think, I think I've given you all a huge number of facts. I don't know that you've even read them. You appear that you haven't. There's no reason for this in Mitchell, period. I'll talk during the three minutes about other subjects, okay?
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion of removing item number fourteen from tonight, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are removing number fourteen from the agenda. Okay. Approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda items may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items. Would anyone like to remove anything on this?
I don't want to remove anything, but I do want to point out that item G is just getting ready for the new seats in the corn palace. At our last board meeting, we talked about potentially selling or coming up with some offering where people could put names on the new seats that are going in, in honor and memory or sponsorship and kind of what that looks like. And so we're beginning those conversations as well and I know that there's been conversations about both, that people are both interested in that and then also purchasing the seat that I assume some family members sat in for the last fifty years. So pretty excited for them to be able to take that piece of memory home with them.
And I would like to add that item K is we are going to be opening up the corn palace decoration for contractors. And one of the things is they have to be done by Thanksgiving, so we don't have to hang corn in the freezing cold weather, so. We are looking for bidders. If anyone is at home in a construction company and wants to nail corn to the side of the corn palace. Okay.
Move approved.
Motion, Mr. McCardle. Second, Mr. Sabers, for a discussion. Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, roll call.
Dosher.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Gold Hammer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input. If you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time.
I'd like to go real first, real quick. I just want to shout out to the parks again. We had four days of rodeo, amazing rodeo, huge parade, how busy the town of Mitchell was. Lakeview Golf Course was the host of four days of SDGA state tournaments. They broke the attendance record yesterday with three hundred and four golfers, which is unheard of for a state tournament, and they have three days of junior going on as we speak. The baseball tournament in town, numbers, sixty teams for a state, state youth tournament, eight hundred players, roughly twelve hundred parents, a thousand grandparents, brothers, sisters, and fans, three thousand people in town for three days, two nights. So Cadwell Parks were very busy and, and I heard all good things coming out of it, so shout out to the parks.
Thank you.
Very good. I'm Roger Music. I wanted to be clear. I support the Corn Palace. It's a historic and unique part of Mitchell's identity. We need to make smart, fact-based decisions about the future of the Corn Palace. I shared a website with all of you, mitchelfacts.com. Have you reviewed it? Did you find any errors? I asked for corrections. I don't think we received any. No one has pointed out any errors in the public either. The data on the website clearly shows Mitchell's sales are not driven by tourism or the Corn Palace. Mitchell's sales are driven by local residents and regional shoppers. I also shared the podcast from South Dakota Public TV on July seventh. Did you guys listen to that? The name was The Realities of Growing South Dakota's Economy, featuring economist Joe Santos, PhD from SDSU, and Bill Evans, Commissioner of the Governor's Office of Economic Development. They outlined the key industries driving the South Dakota economy. Not one mention of tourism in that webcast. So I ask you, what facts do you have that show the Corn Palace expansion is a good deal for Mitchell? I've never seen any facts from this group. I've heard, I like it, it should be expanded, but nobody's got a fact. Did Robin tell you when you started the process that adding floor space in the middle of a building that's a hundred years old is very, very expensive? That should have been in the first meeting. I don't know if it was or not, but obviously if it was, you didn't listen. Do the events that you're proposing that require more floor space, do they also require seats? I, the list I've seen don't. They're pickleball and things like that which don't need any seats. It just needs space. If that's the case, then why are we putting this floor space in the middle of a hundred-year-old building instead of in a new building someplace else? Floor space in the middle of this building, according to Robin, will cost four times as much as floor space someplace else and it will be in a building that is a hundred years old. So the useful life is probably half as long because it's in an existing hundred-year-old building. So let's be practical. If we need floor space for events, then let's build a new building someplace. We don't need any seats. All we need is floor space. Cost per square foot will be a fourth as much and it'll last twice as long. Robin should have pointed that out day one when you were requesting additional floor space.
Sorry, Roger, that's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Stuart Hanson. After seeing the article in the Mitchell Republic titled Five Councilmen Walk Into a Bar, all I could think of was a meeting of the good old boys club. To think that the council president, Mr. McCardle, and four other council members, Mr. Barrington, Mr. Smith, Mr. Gold Hammer, and Mr. Sabers would go to a bar right after a four-hour-plus council meeting where several important issues were discussed is very disturbing to me and it should be to others. I take that as giving the proverbial middle finger, middle finger to the citizens of Mitchell. I've heard people say, what's the big deal? No different than five college students going to a bar or five softball players or nurses going to a bar, but it is different. Those people aren't elected officials. Those people aren't making multi-million dollar decisions for the city and its residents. It's not a good look. It's a wonder, is it a wonder the phrase the good old boys club keeps popping up? On the other, on another note, I was very disappointed but not surprised that the mayor's recommendation for Mr. Bathke to be the liaison for the Mitchell Area Development Corporation was shot down. Wouldn't Mr. Bathke have way more knowledge about development in the Mitchell area? And like you said, Mr. McCardle, in discussing term limits, why would you get rid of someone that has all that knowledge? So if you really believe that, then what was the real reason Mr. Bathke was voted out as the Mitchell Area Development Corporation liaison? Is someone trying to hide something over there? Or maybe it's because he agrees with some of the stuff the new mayor is trying to accomplish. I hate to say it, Mr. Bathke, but maybe you should have been at the bar with the other five council members. Then maybe you wouldn't have been ganged up on by the other council members and removed as the liaison of the development corp. Members, now, on to you, Mr. McCardle. I do not trust you anymore. Do you remember when you called me before last year's election, when the Friends of Fire still were having a lake forum at the Corn Palace? You wanted me to ask a question at a council meeting during Citizens Input and the question was, did the Friends of Fire still pay to rent the Corn Palace? And regrettably, I asked the question. Then you called me twice after last year's June election, when the lake vote passed. Both times you wanted me to get Jordan, the newly-elected mayor, to submit information you had to the Attorney General, Marty Japley, to try and get the vote nullified because it didn't get sixty percent of the vote. But I refused to do that. So that's three times that you didn't have the guts as the council president to ask the mayor those questions yourself. And finally, before the election, I asked you for a yard sign and you said you'd drop one off, but you didn't. I guess you didn't want your name associated with the Hanson name, so I never voted for you. I don't trust you anymore and I never will. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Hello, my name is Kevin Dorn. I'm with Mitchell Pickleball and I just had a couple of questions if we could have some answers to our questions about a timeline for the pickleball courts. I've got people that have given us substantial amounts of money and they're wondering how come it's been setting for days and I understand that construction isn't a perfect, it takes time and, and things happen and things don't go as planned. I was just looking for some answers on a timeline for, to ask, to answer questions that I'm getting from people in the association and from people that gave us some money. Thank you.
Yeah, the guy that probably answered your question is right there behind you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jacob Sonny with ESPN, project engineer for the pickleball project. The fence is being installed this week. The reason the fence took so long to be installed, during the design process, we discussed wind loads on the fence. It's especially important with pickleball courts. The pickleball is a lot lighter than like a tennis ball, so the wind is a major factor. So the intent is if wind screens are to ever be placed on the pickleball fence, it would be able to handle that, that wind loading. So that, that fence was a special order. It took twelve weeks to come in, just came in the last week and that's currently being installed. The substantial completion date for the project is August thirtieth with a final completion date of September twenty-ninth. So after the fence is installed this week, it's anticipated that the acrylic surfacing will be installed next week and then the miscellaneous remaining sidewalk items will be installed the week of August fourth. So any, any other questions regarding pickleball progress?
I'd just reach out to that guy. He seems like you guys would be a good fit for each other.
Feel free to reach out to me anytime. I can get you my card after the meeting as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Karen, making sure there's no food pantry stuff. I don't want you to wait. Just want to be fair. Okay, anyone else? If not, I will move forward to mayor and city council discussion items. I'll start. Mr. Sabers took all the good points. I wanted to say it was a great rodeo and it was a lot of fun and the rodeo parade was fun and I had the honor to ride on a little golf cart with two other former mayors and I thought that was really fun and a lot of people and a lot of candy and it's fun, so everyone seemed happy.
Mayor, if I can follow up on the, on the pickleball, did I understand you say that the, it's going to be surfaced within the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, they're power washing it today. Should be, I think this week or next week they're going to do the surface and I just saw them putting the fence on the west side up today, the poster set.
Okay, so more than likely, if you want to come up, please. I've been asked the same questions and, and just kind of making sure we all understand it. What is substantial completion, the first time they're going to be able to play or when will they be able to get on the courts?
Typically, substantial completion means that it's completed to the point of being able to be used and usually there's miscellaneous items. In the case of like a street project, it'd be considered like seating, things of that nature, but a street would be open. So in the case of this project, yes, it should be able to be used by substantial completion, although the project would still be considered the contractor's site. So if for some reason he feels it needs to be closed, whether that's procuring time, you know, there's a potential that it could be that September date.
Okay.
Unless Justin has a different definition of substantial or final completion, that'd be my understanding of the project.
Sure, sooner would be better than later.
Absolutely.
What is the substantial completion date? Is it September first?
August thirtieth.
August thirty, oh, okay, one day off.
Yep. August thirtieth for substantial, September twenty-ninth for final.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to give a little shout out to, if you're going to the rodeo, sorry, it's a great rodeo and there's another one coming, August thirteenth, second, at six thirty, of course, in the sports arena. At 6:30, of course, in the sports arena. People understand that. And then I'm gonna read a little something that I put together here. I feel compelled to...
I feel compelled to address the series of events that have transpired recently? And to express my concerns regarding the integrity of our council processes. As an elected official? We each have a duty to act with honesty, transparency, and good faith. Several actions have raised serious concerns for me. This I cannot prove, but? On February 7th? Very sure of that date because it was my birthday. I observed Councilman McCartell and Councilman Smith exiting the chamber office together. When I spoke to Mayor Hanson later in the day, he said he was not aware of any meeting at the chamber. As the events unfolded at the next council meeting? It became apparent that the chamber had a gentleman from the State Tourism Department come in and speak. He brought tourism numbers to support the discussion of the Corn Palace remodel. Those numbers have since been debunked by Roger Music and the data he has provided. Then, on April 15th? Councilman McCartell and Councilman Smith took the Corn Palace Director on a field trip to Brookings to look at seating and bleacher options. This I know because I was in Brookings that day also. This action was not done under the mayor's direction. Despite the Corn Palace Director being a direct report to the mayor. Again, the mayor was not invited, he knew nothing about the meeting ahead of time. This overstep raises questions about the boundaries and roles of council members. Now, at the last meeting on July 7th during the liaison appointments, Mayor Hanson attempted to reassign? Me from Chamber Liaison to Development Corporation Liaison. Council President McCartell expressed? Mr. Smith being blindsided by the mayor's actions. While I understand his perspective? I believe it's important to point out that had Council President McCartell attended the pre-meeting held on Wednesday prior to the council meeting? As his normal routine? Or if he would have simply called the mayor? These discussions could have occurred in a more appropriate and constructive setting. During liaison appointments, Councilman McCartell claimed that four or five individuals from the Development Corporation had contacted him about Mr. Smith's removal from that committee. That statement has not only been proven to be unsubstantiated, but in fact? I found out Councilman McCartell himself instigated an outward call to an MADC board member with his concerns about me being on there. It is unfortunate that Kevin's unsubstantiated claim? Was used in a way to influence the vote. When false statements are made publicly to influence votes? That duty is compromised. It erodes the trust of our constituents' place in us? And damages the credibility of this whole governing body. If there were genuine concerns, why didn't the MADC reach out to the mayor directly? The mayor's only a phone call away, but neither the MADC or the concerned council members chose to call him to discuss concerns over appointing committee members. Communication, cooperation, and transparency are lacking. These actions undermine the principles we are sworn to uphold. City business should be conducted with integrity, honesty, and respect. Not deception and manipulation. Additionally, I want to address an incident from last month? When five council members gathered at the bar after meeting? When I was the first appointed to the council? I, along with Councilman Goldhammer? We were sent to appear for orientation training at the State Municipal League? Where they very clearly stated actions such as that were to be avoided. Whether intentional or not? The behavior now serves? As an example of? One that will likely be discussed as what not to do at the Municipal League. Our actions reflect not just ourselves, but the entire city. Councilman McCartell has claimed Mayor Hanson isn't a team player? But in reality, it's the opposite. The mayor is trying to lead? And McCartell has been the main one resisting leadership. He's not the only challenge, but he's certainly the main instigator holding the team back. It is for all the above reasons that I voted no in regard? To place Councilman McCartell as the president again. Respect is given or respect is received. I urge all of us? To reflect on the values this body represents and to uphold them? Both in word and deed. Though we are eight in number, the council stands as one in purpose. Let us not forget each of the eight of us are equal. In closing? I have been labeled by some as a negative thinker or a person who sees the glass as half empty. I would label myself as a realist. I base my decisions on facts? And I believe that's why the people in my ward voted for me. To those that have reached out and shown support over the past two weeks, thank you. I take this position seriously? And I remain steadfast in my commitment to serve the people of Mitchell with honor and diligence. And finally, to the people in this room and the people watching online? Fight, fight, fight? For what you believe in, because your voice really does matter. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? April 15th, I was where?
I'm pretty sure I'm on that date, I don't...
You're pretty sure you're right?
Yeah.
You're wrong.
Kevin, did you go? No, I did.
Was it a different day?
No, I never went to Brookings with Kevin.
I, I have not been to Brookings with Kevin McCartell.
I publicly apologized because I was told you were there.
Well, you should have, why not call me and ask me?
I reached out to you, Jeff, a text, I think we need to talk. You never responded. Is that correct?
I have no idea, I get, I get a hundred texts and emails in a day. You could have called me too.
I, uh... I agree with Mike on a lot of those things. Especially the last sentence, "Fight, fight, fight", but? We shouldn't fight each other, we should fight? For the people of Mitchell. And I think that's something that's been lacking.
I just have one comment, and I, I think that this is a really important thing to remember. Is that you have been talking for the last however long about defunding? The MADC and the chamber, why? Why would we, why would anyone put you in as their liaison when you don't want them to get any money? I think that's a really important... The person who's the liaison for any organization is the person who fights for them and who defends them and who? Moves, helps move them forward and, and? You're do, you, you're not their liaison, but it's a good thing. You worked for the chamber and every time they got up, you were the one who was criticizing them, so? I feel like we did the right thing to make sure that we have someone who's a champion for those two organizations. And you can, you know, you'll do a great job on planning and zoning, I know you will, so thank you for serving there.
I'd like to address something real quick.
Yep.
First of all, I think if you want, if someone challenges you, the best thing you can do is put them in a room with that person and sell them that your idea is awesome. Second of all, we're not here? To defend the Development Corporation and Chamber. We are here for the American people of Mitchell, South Dakota. That's who we're elected to serve. And I think Mike would do a great job, you know? He literally poured the foundation for hundreds of developments in, in Mitchell. And why wouldn't you put someone like that to help? Join together, but now it's? Unfortunately, there's gonna be this rift? Between? Because now he's no longer invited to, with a seat at the table. I, I? I've never said I was going to defund him. Did I claim that we should take some money back? And hold it for a project? Absolutely, I've said that. I've never said to defund him? Because they do serve a purpose. And unless I said, Jeff has done a great job with it, I'm not saying that. I'm simply saying, if you leave the same person in there? You get the same ideas all the time. I had great conversation? With the board members I reached out to, all but two of them. They simply did not have a problem with me doing it. Simply did not have a problem with me doing it, so that's what? When Mr. McCartell said that? They requested Mr. Smith to be back on there, I was like? I thought that the mayor was going to have that? Choice to place who he wanted there. But I did hear that you had told somebody else I was going to defund Susan and that's simply not the case. That's accountability, that's what I want. It's not my money, it's not your money, it's the people's money. And we are responsible. I served on a church board for 15 years before I came here. Everybody should do that before they come here first because you really? Respect the funds when you serve on a church board? Because you have to answer them every Sunday. I, I mean, I agree with them, I don't even take a cellphone stipend? Because I feel so bad that the taxpayer would have to pay for a cellphone that I already have. I mean, that to me is like? I know, I don't know, maybe everyone's mind is different, but? I'm, I agree, accountability. I just think teamwork would be really nice to see.
Teamwork would be nice to see. And I don't think there's a person in this council that doesn't have the best interest of the city of Mitchell, South Dakota. That's a false statement by? I think every one, eight of us care about what goes on in Mitchell, South Dakota. And teamwork? I've been the president since you've been the mayor. I, you probably have called me maybe three times the whole time you've been mayor. That's not teamwork.
You also don't call me.
You're the, you're the, you're the mayor, you should be communicating with us, you're the one? That starts at the top and works its way down. Doesn't start here and work its way up. You need to communicate better with all of us, because, uh...
Nobody responds to my emails.
Show me the last name you sent an email to me.
I sent one this morning.
To me?
Yeah, everyone. About Robin not being here, nobody responded but Mike.
I never got an email, I can show you my emails. Anybody else get an email? I mean? I, I...
I mean, it's the city council?
And I'm not ragging on you, I'm just saying we need, I agree, we all need better communication. Communication lacks big time. With all... And if we had better communication, I think we'd get a lot more things accomplished, I mean? When we find out? You know, shortly before the meeting, let's? It's, uh? The other mayors I've been under, they, they've communicated and asked, you know, they'll say, "Do you think that's a good idea though? With the council and if they think it's good? They proceed with it, but they think the council's not gonna do it? You know, they reach out and ask. And I'm not bad mouthy in one bit, but? We need better communication with, with all of this. And I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way, but? I think we need to have better communication lines from top to bottom.
Alright, I guess we all agree on that.
Yeah, if we want to get something done, we, we have to communicate, I mean? And we're not, and we're all not gonna agree on everything, I mean, that's...
I mean, the last, you know, and I'm not trying to drag on anyone else, but the last two meetings we were supposed to have? All together for this, the pre-council, no one showed up? I mean, Tim showed up, but you canceled it, the one before that, you canceled it.
That's probably, probably the one I've missed in the last seven years.
To enroll?
Well, nobody met last week, because Stephanie was gone.
Okay. Alright, anyway.
In other news? I wanted to call out and say thank you, uh, Joe. I think those, uh, blocks over across the way that block that alley look really nice. If you haven't had a chance to see them painted, I suggest you go over and take a look at them, they turned out really great, so?
Yep, I like to give credit where credit is due. Um, Mitchell Main Street, uh, helped immensely with that, I didn't have a whole lot to do, turned it over to them and? Yeah, I agree, it, it looks good. Jordan, are you gonna mention Arts of the Park? Uh, no, I wasn't, but? Since you asked me to. Uh, Arts of the Park is this weekend, it's gonna be fun. Kickoff party Friday night and? This weekend? It's gonna be busy and it's gonna be crazy and I probably won't answer any phone calls because I'm gonna be on a? Shortwave radio talking with a bunch of other people? Because it's gonna be chaos, but? Last year there was like 10,000 people, this year it's probably gonna be more. Couple, almost 200 vendors total and? Way too many food trucks, we had to? You know, thanks to some people for coming across and getting us some power? And have a lot of food trucks, last year I ate at everyone, it's gonna be impossible this year, unless I eat six times a day, which I'm definitely not gonna do, so? It'll be fun. Okay, anything else before we move on? Alright, so the next thing is we have to add an executive session? Real quick right now, so I need a motion to enter into executive session according to SDCL 1-25-2, 3, 4, legal? Okay.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Yeah, but they? It's a separate item that just came up. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries, so we're gonna go have a quick private discussion and then we'll be right back. Technically, no.
I can't? I just came down here and I just need one minute of your time.
Technically, technically, no, I would love to hear you, but we, we're supposed to be sticking to this based on legal reasons.
It'll be quick.
No, we will be.
Oh, you will be quick.
We will be quick. Okay, so to answer your question first, I'm not allowed to, you're not, state law basically says you can't just come up here and talk since we're past that point, unless you want to talk about something on the agenda, so I just want to address that first. Okay, that's fine. Okay, I just want to make sure. I didn't wanna. Okay, okay. Alright, next, Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the City Council to recess and sit as the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion by Beth Key, second by Gold Hammer. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Action to set the date for Board of Adjustment hearing eight dash four dash twenty-five. Okay. Motion by McCardle, second by Gold Hammer. Okay, further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Reconvene the City Council and entertain a motion for the Board of Adjustment to adjourn in the City Council to reconvene in regular session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Gold Hammer. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Alright, number eleven, hearing action on the following alcohol license applications. Do we do these individually? Chief, can I please? Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gold Hammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCardle. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Wolfgang Dahman, DBA Lupo, one oh eight North Main Street, and retail, new retail on-off malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine license, video lottery is not included. Chief, can I please?
Police Department has reviewed this. We have no concerns. Recommend approval.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gold Hammer. Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Transfer of RB two six nine six six, retail on-off sale malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine license for Lucky Clovers LLC doing business as Lucky Clovers nine oh nine, North Main Street to Lucky Clovers LLC, DBA Lucky Clovers six oh five, South Sand Warren Boulevard, video lottery is included. Chief, can I please?
Uh, we've reviewed this one as well. No concerns.
Move to approve.
McCardle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gold Hammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Transfer of RB two six nine six seven, retail on-off sale malt beverage and SD farm wine license from Lucky Clovers LLC doing business as Lucky Clovers nine oh nine, North Main Street to Lucky Clovers LLC doing business as Lucky Clovers six oh five, South Sand Warren Boulevard, video lottery is not included. Chief, can I please?
Uh, Police Department recommends approval.
What? Oh, is included, I'm sorry. Did I say not? Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gold Hammer. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
Are you looking to speak on these licenses, sir?
Are you looking to speak on these licenses? Okay, you're on the last one. Here's your chance. Oh, are you just talking about the alcohol licenses, or are you waiting for something else? Yeah. You want to talk about the alcohol licenses? Come on up. Hopefully it was the last one.
Orberson, I'm pastor at Grace Baptist Church. I didn't come here for this at all. I just came here because you approved a street closure for our Bible school in the, in the uh, first page. And I happened to see this, and I saw the address. And I said, I recognize that address, that's next door to my church. And uh, I just wanted to make a little bit of a historic comment. I uh, came to this town thirty-five years ago. And my, I like Mitchell. I don't like Sioux Falls. And Mitchell picked it up for me. I've raised ten kids here. And uh, my kids are coming back to South Dakota. They've all been gone. Three of them are back here, and some of them want to keep, come back, come back. And I appreciate South Dakota and uh, Mitchell. And uh, um, but I, but I noticed on things when I came here. The city of Mitchell floats on alcohol. I, I took a walk one day from the depot to the Corn Palace. This is a couple of years ago. There were fourteen places where you can buy alcohol on seven blocks. And every time the sun goes under a cloud, there's another permit for selling more alcohol. And uh, you can't smoke in a building, so then they were building these little, little, little.
Smoke shacks?
Shacks outside of the, and I've seen, I've seen high, high level businessmen standing at twenty below zero outside of their own building, freezing in the day, trying to get a cigarette, because they can't smoke in their own building. But, everybody wants to drink all the time. And uh, you can drive down the road smoking a cigarette, you're probably not gonna kill somebody because you're smoking a cigarette. But you go down the street or the highway, the ads are on the radio all the time, don't drink, don't drink. Uh, they've got these signs about ADD, Asgard, uh, designated driver. Because alcohol kills. We know that. So, what I have to say here is not gonna stop any of this. You've already voted on several of these permits, and I just had an opportunity to talk to the folks, and I haven't realized I know this lady. But I just want to put my two cents in, and let you know what I think. Alcohol is a bad deal. And that everything has to have alcohol in it. A few years ago, we had to have wine on the sidewalk in the sandwich shops right outside your restaurant, or nobody will come to Mitchell. You gotta have these little cafe with wine and sandwiches. So we voted it in. I didn't. It not voted in. I don't think there's one restaurant that added that table and wine out on the sidewalk, and I don't know what the permit costs. But people still come to Mitchell anyway without that. But the idea is, we gotta add more booze. We gotta add more booze. Now, I just spoke to these folks. They said they're gonna put a fence up. I just, I just don't want, I was just thinking, I don't know what the rules are. I know you can't have, uh, some places you can't have a bar within so many feet of a school. Uh, the Mouse House was selling alcohol before I came to town. And it was across the alley. And Marcos was, so it's not gonna change anything. But I just wanted just let you know what I feel, because I'm not for it. These, these folks have got a right to have their business, and I think I can get along with them. But I just, I didn't want to see this go by and right next door to my church and let everybody think, yeah, that's okay. You know, Grace Baptist Church, and a bar right next door is pretty compatible. I don't think it is. But uh, you'll just have to go and do what you do. But I wanted to just let you know where I stood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Action to award bid for Cadwell infield improvements, twenty twenty-five. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to award bid for Cadwell infield improvements twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three tabled from the last City Council meeting, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, after further review, we do recommend that we reject all bids. Uh, we'll make some adjustments to the specifications and bring it back for a rebid. I can answer any questions you may have.
Motion to reject.
Motion to reject all bids. In a second, Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action award bid for street sweeper project number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, bids were opened on July fifteenth at ten AM in City Hall Council chambers. One bid was received by Environmental Equipment and Services Inc. Uh, from Elko, Minnesota for two hundred thousand. Uh, the street sweeper is a twenty twenty Timco with sixteen thousand five hundred seventy-nine miles. Uh, bent abulation is attached. Uh, we do recommend award. Answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mr. McCurdle. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
Joe, are we replacing the current sweeper or adding to the fleet or what?
This street sweeper is going to be added. Uh, currently, when one of our street, our sweepers is down, uh, that takes obviously one out of commission and we would like two running all the time. Um, this street sweeper also gives us the benefit of a, uh, to be able to dump into a dump truck. So instead of having to drive back to um, the street shop to dump in our pile, uh, we'd be able to uh, save time and dump in a dump truck. Then have the dump truck, uh, take that material to the street shop.
So Joe, what does a new one cost?
We were told last year, uh, a new, a brand new street sweeper would cost three hundred thousand, which is why we budgeted, I think, three ten. Uh, we were told this year they cost up to uh, half a million dollars.
Whoa, okay. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number fourteen, we are skipping. Number fifteen, action approved agreement A twenty twenty-five dash forty-three. Level three cultural resource survey at Firesteel Park with Kogo Archaeological Consulting Services. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, this is for the lake project at Firesteel Park. Um, the Army Corps of Engineers has required a level three cultural resur- resources survey uh, be completed. Uh, the survey will include a record search for surveys or cultural resources previously identified. Examine historic atlas and plat maps, conduct a pedestrian survey and a subservency evaluation to evaluate the likelihood of buried cultural resources at that location. Uh, the findings will be prepared in a final written report suitable for submission to the South Dakota State Historic Preservation Office or SHIPO. Uh, with a recommendation of the project's effect on the area. Uh, Kogo Archaeological Consulting Services has provided a proposal at a fee not to exceed seven thousand five hundred. Uh, staff recommends approval. I can answer any questions you may have.
Motion by Mrs.
Schurz. Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? What do you want in the audience?
I do have a question. I mean, it seems like since we're putting, we're not digging down, we're putting things on top. So would that still be considered disrupting a burial site?
So in this location where Firesteel Park is, where we're going to be placing the material, there will be excavation into that area in order to build the burms. So I just want to make sure that um, there's no historical um, sites within that area.
Okay, further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved agreement A twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, LifeQuest Micro Home Village Project with District Three Planning and Development, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, LifeQuest is planning to construct uh, micro homes to provide affordable housing to adults with developmental disabilities. Public hearing for the project was held on March seventeenth um, at council. Council approved a grant application at the April seventh council meeting to apply for seven hundred seventy thousand dollars worth of a community block grant. Uh, the grant was awarded on June sixth. The attached agreement is with planning and development District Three to provide administrative assistance for the grant. Staff recommends council approval of the agreement uh, for a lump sum fee of twenty thousand and the grant authorization for the mayor to sign. This is just a pass through grant um, for LifeQuest.
And Mayor and Council, I just have one thing to add. Stephanie L., Wine City Administrator, there's a letter on your desk that came from LifeQuest. That's just verifying that if for some reason the federal grant funds were pulled again, like we um, had heard with the safe house. That LifeQuest was committing to providing that, the funding for the remainder of the project. Um, we did add that to the project file as well.
Mr. McCurdle, second by Mr. Bethke. Any further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, my name is Steve Sipson and I fully enjoy what LifeQuest does for a lot of people. And uh, I support them getting this grant. I also understand that we have a talented city administrator and a talented city attorney. I believe those resources should be strong enough to go directly to the state for this funding and not send up to twenty thousand dollars to a corporation in Yankton. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, tax increment District forty-three developer agreement Peaceful Pines, Mr. Johnson.
All right, so this uh, developer's agreement does relate to the tax increment district uh, forty-three that was approved at the last meeting for the Peaceful Pines development. Um, again, this is more or less a standard form document. Um, I will point out that there were a couple of sections added to this one. Based on, uh, we've kind of been dealing with a developer who's uh, not gone through the Mitchell process at this point. They've dealt with other communities. And this is language that they've used in other communities. Um, I've got no objection to any of the terms that they included. If anything, they're uh, slightly more beneficial to the city. So I would still recommend approval.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? Come on up.
Yes, it's me again.
Let's get you a chair.
Um, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to address this issue. I want to first point to uh, uh, section thirteen of the uh, agreement. Uh, this document, along with the project plan for tax increment district number forty-three constitutes the entire agreement of the parties. With that in mind, I want to move to section six. And so it says financing for the T, uh, district is number forty-three shall be procured by the developer. Procuring financing to fund the district improvements through financing from a commercial lender at developer's sole risk and expense. And now I refer to page six of the developer plan. That's where you'll find the but for statement. And in that it states, the anticipated costs associated with necessary infrastructure improvements, site development. And other eligible project expenses create a financing gap that cannot be overcome through conventional funding sources. That statement seems to be in conflict with section six of the con- of the agreement. And uh, I wanted to point that out. Uh, the but for statement is, is a key element into determining, based on research that I've read from David Merriman. He did a document called a TIF, Improving TIFs for Economic Development. And on page forty-six, he states, although state statutes and regulations generally require specific criteria. Criteria that must be documented prior to the establishment of a TIF district. These criteria are vague enough that almost any project with strong political support can satisfy the but for requirement. In addition, on page fifteen, he talks about if it, if it was true that no rural state appreciation would have occurred in the TIF district. But for the TIF activities, overlying governments such as school districts and other special districts would get the same amount of property tax revenue that would have received without the TIF district. And so I asked, would no rural state appreciation occur but for TIF forty-three? And from the agreement, section five, it states, the base value of the property located in the district number forty-three. Has or will be certified by the South Dakota Department of Revenue at approximately twenty-six thousand and forty dollars. And so that's where they're establishing the baseline in order to determine what the increment is, the two point five million. And when I, uh, I looked into the uh, assessor's office and the current assessed value is a hundred and forty thousand for twenty-five acres. And you divide that by the four point six five in the district, you come up with twenty-six thousand and forty dollars. That's clear. But what, what I'm concerned about is the twenty-five acres was purchased in twenty twenty-one for three hundred and fifty-five thousand. And it's only assessed for a hundred and forty today. And it started out being assessed at seventy-five thousand. It grew to eighty-five. Now it's a hundred and forty. And my argument is that today, that property is worth far more than twenty-six thousand and forty dollars. So we're understanding the base and overstating the tax increment. And according to the uh, page twenty-six of the project plan, the land is supposedly going to be four hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's significantly higher than twenty-six thousand and forty dollars. So I have a problem with uh, the baseline in this project. And I discussed this with the Department Equal, Davidson County Department Equalization this morning. And we agreed, if you look at the statute, this is the right way to do it. It's, it's wrong based on what it's going to do to the uh, Davidson County uh, uh, government, the school system. And the state aid to, from South Dakota will be o- o- overstated. And those under, overlying government entities are going to take it and uh, going to have a reduced impact if we, instead of uh, doing the baseline at a higher amount. And lowering the increment. Now with that said, I want to talk about who is PPSL Mitchell LLC. It was incorporated on April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five with the principal address, four thirty-two Fifth Street, Brookings, South Dakota, five seven zeros zero six. I found an SEC filing dated June tenth, twenty twenty-five with the same Brookings address listing five executives. In which four are, have the same Brookings address. And the other one, the fifth, being the Mitchell landlord, Justin TC, the JTZ Properties LLC. So all through this process, we've heard nothing but J, uh, JTZ Properties doing all the plotting and the rezoning. And all of a sudden we get to the TIF and all of a sudden it's PPSL Mitchell LLC. So what I'm concerned about is, is that if the but for system, a statement is completely false. Then a corporation in Brookings will be receiving an additional two point five million in profit on the backs of Davidson County taxpayers. Then the city will collect three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in administrative fee as part of the agreement. And uh, well, I'm suggesting that we should put their feet to the fire on the but for statement. We should request in this agreement that they provide annually audit financial statements to verify what their profit is. Including uh, the tax subsidy. If, if they have any profit after taking the tax subsidy, the but for statement would be false. And it should be stated in the agreement that if, if that happens, the TIF is automatically terminated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved. Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six, plot of lot eleven, block one, westward, first edition, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, the plat is included in the packet. Uh, planning commission uh, approved this unanimously. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Bethke. Further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to enter executive session according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash three legal and employment negotiations. And we're also going to add personnel. One for personnel, one for personnel. Okay. Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Okay, further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There will be no action after this. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There will be no action after this.